Okay, I'd like to call to order the afternoon session of the Board of Supervisors for June 19th, 2018.
Supervisors Frost, here. Kennedy?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
Serna?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you. Before we get into our business, I wanted to acknowledge the Sacramento Association of Realtors Leadership Class, which I'm thinking is over here. If you guys all want to stand up. Okay, welcome and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Call your first item?
Okay, so what was held from consent this morning, our item number six, approved three-year labor agreements with 11 bargaining units, including the Sacramento County Deputy Sheriffs Association, Environmental Management Specialists of Sacramento County, representing environmental specialist supervisory and non-supervisory units, engineering technicians and technical inspectors, International Union of Operating Engineers, Local 39, representing the Operations Maintenance Unit, Law Enforcement Management Association, Sacramento County Alliance of Law Enforcement, representing the law enforcement support and supervisors' units, Sacramento County Administrative Professionals Association, Sacramento County Probation Association, Sacramento County Professional Accountants Association, Union of American Physicians and Dentists, and the United Public Employees of California, Local 792, and compensation changes for unrepresented employees, including general salary adjustment for unrepresented employees in fiscal year 2018-19.
Madam Chair, we have just had one quick comment. Mr. Bonner has to put in the record.
Okay, Mr. Bonner?
Good afternoon, Board. In accordance with state law, the cost of living adjustments for the unrepresented management employees also apply to the county's executive management employees as defined by Government Code 3511.1D.
Thank you. Is that all?
Yes.
That's all we have.
Next item?
Item number 80 is the North Vineyard Station Specific Plan Development.
You need an emotion.
We're gonna take a vote.
Oh, did you need an emotion?
We need a vote.
That's what I asked him. What do you want?
Oh, I'm sorry. We need a vote.
Would there be a motion on item six?
So move.
Second.
His vote?
Okay, I can get a clarification-
Unanimous vote.
-if I could to the, what Mr. Bonner put on the record. So, that means from the county executive all the way, all the administrative staff? It doesn't mean, it's not elected officers. I just want to be clear, it's not board members, the board supervisors-
It's not.
-getting paid increase, nor the sheriff, nor district attorney, nor the assessor. But every, you're saying everybody in the organization is not represented, including yourself?
Including myself. It does include the sheriff, the DA, and the assessor, because when we set their pay, they get the same as the unrepresented employees.
Okay, but the board supervisors did not just vote themselves a raise. I want to be very clear.
They did not. The board did not get a raise.
Ours is set by ordinance, by charter since 1986.
By charter. Once a year, you have that adjustment, but not in this one.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else?
Item 80 was also continued from this morning. The North Vineyard Station Specific Plan Development Impact Fee Program, public hearing on adoption of a resolution approving the update of the park development impact fee component. The environmental document is an addendum to the final supplemental environmental impact report.
I think everybody got a chart.
Yes. Good afternoon. Bob Davison, Division Chief of the County Engineering Division. And based on Supervisor Natoli's questions from earlier this morning, we have provided a revised chart. That shows more of the categories that were left out of the report.
Thank you for-
Questions?
Just one follow-on. I spoke to him just before we started, relative to accessory units, because on the ag res, dential on the ag, but you can also have them in other zones, you can find accessory units. What is the charge? The primary residents would get charged whatever's in the fee schedule, but if you had a secondary unit?
An accessory dwelling unit under the revised fee rate would be $3,565 per accessory dwelling unit.
And are there any exemptions to that based upon square footage? State law, you know, prescribes that you can have accessory structures, and our zoning code comports with that, versus those that require a use permit, where you actually require entitlement? Some are ministerial nature now. And so, how is that governed?
So, if there is any exemptions, then certainly would not be charged. As far as I understand, there is a certain requirements, and I don't have them off the top of my head, but if they're a accessory dwelling unit, then they would pay that. If they don't qualify under those requirements, then they would not be charged. So, we would just base off that.
Because if I recall, just from our discussions here, this board, on, you know, the zoning code update and accessory dwellings, there's a certain definition. State may have a definition, or they have a more, they have a broad one that allows us to fall in that umbrella. Is there other exemptions based upon socioeconomic situations, square footage, or?
So, I could review that with planning and report back.
That's fine. Yeah, I don't want to take up the time. But I just, I think it's important to know, and we have other fee districts, and this update obviously is important to the park component, but I think that, and even as it pertains to new subdivisions, if they build in that, you know, the accessory unit for other family members or whatever, by law, they'd have that square footage, and it may have a separate restroom and maybe kitchen facilities as well, but may only be four, 600 square feet, as to how those charges are calculated, because those are done, obviously, by our, you know, our building permit officials and plan check reviewers. And so, I think it's important to know that. I assume that that's all taken care of in the way we do things, but we're updating ordinances, a significant increase, in some cases, 55 percent, in how we treat that as relates to accessory dwellings, which certainly brings some level of additional human occupation and probably, and potential use of the parks, but it's not, you know, there's a different calculation. I guess I'd just be curious to know what that is, so. Okay, thanks. I'd move the item. Madam Chair, unless you have any other comments?
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Item 81 is the Squirrel Monkey Haven Project. This is appeal of the zoning administrator's approval of a conditional use permit for a property located at 11859 North Valenzen Road on the east side of the Colony Road in the Southeast Area Community. The applicants are Christine and Paul Buckmaster. The environmental determination is a negative declaration.
Good afternoon, members of the board. LeAnn Moffett, your county planning director. You originally heard this appeal item was before the board on May 8th. The item was continued in order to have a meeting between the parties to see if some sort of compromise could be reached. That meeting was held. Staff initially prepared a report about the merits of the project, summarized the meeting, and provide, provided revised conditions for your consideration. However, late yesterday, we did receive correspondence from the applicant, Nick Abdis, on behalf of the Buckmasters, in relationship to the appeal, requesting that the board direct that an EIR be prepared on the project. And so, therefore, staff today issued a revised report with revised recommendations, essentially recommending to your board that you do several actions if you are willing to have this, direct that an EIR be prepared. Our recommendation would be that the item would remain with the board. Once the EIR is prepared, we would come back before you with that EIR, and then go through the merits of the project and the merits of the appeal. So, those are staff's opening remarks here, and then it would probably be a good idea to hear from both the applicant, who is requesting this EIR be prepared, and then also the appellant.
Are there any questions of staff?
Thank you. LeAnn, is there any estimate at this point, perhaps if you can't answer, the applicant's representative will, but is there any estimate of how much an environmental impact report is going to cost for, what is it, 55 monkeys?
Yes. Staff has provided the applicant with an estimate. Obviously, the cost of EIRs can vary widely, depending on the project. You know, $100,000 is fairly typical. We have done a lot of work on this project already, so our estimate to go back through the whole process, including EIR preparation and all the work to get back to the board, is in the $50,000 to $60,000 range.
So, it could be as much as $2,000 per monkey?
Whatever that works out to, yes.
And do that math.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And we estimate around six to seven months to get back in front of the board.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, just briefly, and we'll hear from folks, and may have some other questions or comments, but I just, LeAnn, I want to thank you for your assistance, that of certainly Krista Whitman and others, when both the Buckmasters and their representatives, Mr. Havas, and certainly the clutches and neighbors and their representatives, Mr. Mooney came together, and as we had left the last time the board heard this back in May, and I appreciate the effort that went into that by all parties, and as you said, it didn't produce any agreements. I think the notes have obviously been shared. I don't think they've been shared in the staff report, and I think reflected, obviously, the comments, concerns, and issues, obviously some of them relevant to what will be, what'll be looked at in the environmental review process. I just wanted to also note, and maybe before we conclude on any decision on this item, that as a part of that conversation and discussion that we had, the Director of Animal Care and Regulation, Mr. Dickinson, participated in that, and we had, in fact, again, I learned a couple of new things about the wild animal permitting process, and I think it's timely irrespective of this pending application, that we look at that process. It's embedded, I believe, in county code, and one that probably has its roots back into the 1960s. I could be wrong about that, but I think that, certainly in light of the discussion we've had around this particular application, and the fact that we only have one other wild animal permit issued in the county currently, there, over the years, Mr. Dixon expressed there may have been a handful, but more than just about the animals, the process that's utilized for an annual review, what sort of notice goes around that, because it came relevant, very relevant, to at least some of the discussion we had relative to, you know, how people might participate in that, if there were certain limitations, certain conditions, that there would be an opportunity for folks to review that, but how they would know about that, and, you know, where that information is held. And I think it also goes back to some of the discussion we've had in these chambers about information as relates to this proposal, and the monkeys themselves, and their medical records and so forth, and who would be the holder of that, and obviously, the Buckmasters offered at the last session to make that available to the animal care director. But I think it would be helpful, Mr. Gill, and certainly it wouldn't be LeAnn's undertaking so much, but I think to, and it doesn't necessarily run parallel to this, but it might, but I think it has some relevancy, so maybe something that we want to take a look at, because it was something that we talked about, although I don't, people didn't have a lot of confidence necessarily in that process. It's a little bit under the radar, and so I think we might be wise to look at, one, how we review applications, who does that, and then what sort of annual review, and what sort of notice goes around that, and any other components that would be relevant to that. And so, I, and Krista was there, so she heard some of that conversation. So, I think that would be very helpful. Thanks.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, you're suggesting we hear from both the applicant and the appellant?
Yes, applicant first in this case, because they're the one asking for the board, for the EIR, and then the appellant.
Okay.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Nick Abdis with the Thomas Law Group on behalf of Paul and Christine Buckmaster. I don't think there's much to say, other than just a few points. First of all, Supervisor Natoli, I want to thank you for your leadership in at least convening the meeting to attempt to try to resolve the differences with the neighbors in this case. Unfortunately, seems like there's quite a chasm between the applicant and the neighbors. And given the nuances and vulnerabilities of SEQA that we're all well familiar with, we have opted to prepare an EIR in this case, as honestly as crazy as that sounds, for a monkey sanctuary with about 100 pounds of animal biomass. But in any event, here we are. Happy to answer any questions, and thank you for your time.
I don't think we have any questions. Does anyone else from your side wish to speak? Okay. Mr. Mooney, are you going to speak also?
Yes. A couple, a couple of items, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. And also, thank Supervisor Natoli for your efforts on the settlement meeting or mediation. It was appreciated, and it was, it was, and it was very informative, and it helped my clients as well. And again, Donald Mooney on behalf of Don and Xena Claunch, the appellant. And we obviously support the request for a EIR. The one thing I would point out to the board is, on the appeal, as the amended staff report indicated, there are two issues. There's one, there's a zoning, whether or not it's consistent with the zoning and the land use, and then the SEQA. If the board was so inclined, the board could rule on that issue on the appeal in terms of a denial. I don't think, because there's no environmental document to approve, or if the board decides to grant an EIR, that is, or to prepare an EIR. But if the board was so inclined, the board could just not grant the appeal on that basis and deny the project, and bring this matter to a conclusion. That being said, if the board's not inclined to go that direction, we certainly would support the preparation of an EIR and this process going forward. And I think it's probably a good idea to clarify, for the zoning code, to clarify how wild animals are treated and permitted, because, again, we don't believe that the code addresses that currently. The one other issue I would raise is Sacramento County has an extremely high administrative appeal fee, and it's very hard for just, you know, working folks to participate in this process when they have to hire an attorney, but also pay an administrative appeal fee. It's, I believe it's around $4,800 that my clients had to pay in order to have this matter heard and brought before the Board of Supervisors. And in light of the fact that the staff recommendation to prepare an EIR, which was part of our appeal asked for, I would ask the board to consider refunding the administrative appeal fee to my clients. Again, you know, I practice before, I go before a lot of counties and cities, and not to be critical of the county, but your administrative appeal fees are on the much higher end than other jurisdictions in the community, in Northern California. So, if you, if the board is inclined to direct staff to prepare an EIR, that is a basis of our appeal, I would ask the board to take that under consideration. Thank you.
I would defer that to staff to respond to. I think we're reviewing our fees at the moment.
We are.
You gotta get real close. Thank you.
I can never seem to make that mic work. We are reviewing our fees. That will be before the board at some future date for review. We do tend to expend a lot of time and money, particularly, including on this appeal. It is a costly process. We have not written a report to the board on a fee waiver request. If the board would like us to do that, we could that, we could do that. But I'm not prepared today to recommend the waiver of the appeal. But if you'd like us to return with that, or we could return with that item, when we return with the whole item.
So, I think I'm getting the suggestion that you return with your thoughts on that when the EIR comes in front of it, the whole project comes back?
Yeah, how about if we do that all in one item?
Okay. I, thank you. I do have four people signed up. Does anyone still wish to continue to speak, given that we're deferring action on this item? Okay, please come forward.
Madam Chair, just while Diane's coming forward. LeAnn, it might be helpful to you that, assuming we approve staff recommendation, just take just a moment before we actually take a motion to explain the process for the environmental preparation. There's a notice of preparation and so forth, and kind of, so people in the audience, I mean, obviously, maybe there's clear understanding about that, just so people will know, and you can, don't have to do it right now, obviously, the chair's called for Ms. Moore to speak, but I just think that might be helpful to people to know.
Could you introduce yourself, so I know which one of the speakers you are?
Yeah, I'm Diane Moore with Moore Biological Consultants, and the Claunches actually asked me to just state a few words today. You know, we submitted, I wrote a letter, an email yesterday, and Xena Claunch sent one in, and Paula Soni, she had, Sonia Polly had, she wrote one, which we emailed off from my office on Sunday. And I think that the common thread in all the recent correspondence is, and something we've been asking for all along, is a request for transparency and disclosure. And, you know, the county operates in a, you know, in a manner of honesty and disclosure, and we feel that this process, you know, is not being sort of paralleled by the applicant. This secrecy around the origin of the monkeys, what's really been done with them, and where they are now, you know, where they came from. We don't understand why that's such a mystery, and I think in the information that has been submitted recently, we've given you a bit of information that demonstrates that this is public record, that we all can get our hands on. It'll take a while, but we can get there. And we're just seeking that if, you know, the applicant decides to continue to move forward to this project and actually prepare the IR, that the supervisors ask for disclosure of this item. It's, I've just never, I've been through a lot of SEQA for 25 years, and I've never seen a project with sort of mystery approved.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thanks, Diane.
Could I ask, County Council, is it a requirement of the SEQA Act that we would discuss the origin of the monkeys?
No, it's not. That, that was raised at the meeting, and the applicants had a reason. You know, whether it's valid, I couldn't tell you, but they did have a reason for why they were unable or unwilling to disclose that information. But that's not, in my understanding is that is not information that the county would need, and I'm seeing Tim Hawkins nod. That is not information that the county needs in order to prepare the EIR or to bring the project forward. It's something that if the applicant and the appellant's want to work out amongst themselves, they can, but we don't need that information in order to do our, our job here.
Okay, thank you. And then, just to make sure, Xena Claunch, Don Claunch, and Sonia Polly, do not wish to speak? Okay. Then, the, back to the planning director. I guess one of the decisions we're being asked to make here is whether we want to make a decision without the EIR. That's attorney, Mr. Mooney, asked. Is there any desire of the board to do that?
I'm prepared to support going forward with my own document.
Okay, so, there's no interest in that, Mr. Mooney? Then, I guess we would want to hear from the planning director as the next step.
Yes, so Supervisor Natoli asked about the EIR process, so just briefly to respond to that question. Initially, as you indicated, a notice of preparation goes out whereby the public can comment on things that ought to be part of the scope of the environmental impact report. So, that has a circulation period of 30 days. Then, staff prepares the EIR, so this is done by county staff, not by the applicants. And then, there is a circulation period for that draft EIR, where people can comment on the draft EIR. Then, we respond to comments on the draft EIR, and prepare a final EIR, and then at that point, we would come forward to the Board of Supervisors with the final EIR in hand, as well as then an, a reanalysis of the project, any revised conditions and mitigation measures, et cetera. And I indicated it would take us about six or seven months to get back to the board. About three months of that is prescribed periods for, for comment and noticing. So, it's hard to speed it up when there is so much of that process in order to be transparent, built into SEQA.
Any additional questions about the preparation of the EIR, Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, just to the one point a moment ago, and Krista responded to, but as it relates to the whereabouts of the animals currently, but I think as, I understand that, and that was talked about, but as to the origins, I think it's been talked about, that they were researched in, in part of the documentation, and certainly the Buckmasters have offered this, and I think the neighbors have requested it, and maybe in, in more detail than what's been currently made available, but that as a part of wild animal permit, and part of the process that we, brought us to this moment today, that knowing, you know, their manifest is relates to being, you know, born and bred in captivity, they're not wild monkeys, but also that, or new world versus old world, however those are defined, but that, there is, that information is available, and I think it goes to some of the questions that have been raised relative to type of research, that's been offered, obviously, in a public manner, but I think that is important. Mr. Hawkins may not need that information, but I think that, you know, that should be, if it's not already borne out in documents and validated, that should be there, because I know it's been part of the essence, at least of one of the arguments that's been put forth, relative to, you know, knowing certainly the current colony that's, you know, a part of this application, but is, if this were to be permitted, other, other monkeys that might join, I guess, to be determined sanctuary, that, I think that that's important. And so, I guess I would just ask right on the record today, that, you know, for whatever information, there may be something that's prescriptive relative proprietary and/or for other- for other safety reasons, that's not disclosed about where they are now or will be in the next five or six or seven months, but they're being proposed to be at a location in Galt, California. And so I think it's important to know, you know, the background, to have that available, and that's been offered. And so I just, I guess I would just put that out there on the record today. I think that's, it's important information to some folks, if not to all the folks in the audience and others.
Yeah, and we will look at that, whether it's SEQA mitigation or whether it's project conditions, and we did write a report with conditions that do address some of that, but we will obviously be relooking at that before we come back before the board.
Any other questions or comments? Supervisor Natoli, do you want to make the?
Okay, yeah. And with the understanding that Ms. Moffett, when we, next to have this item before us, would come back with some response to the fee waiver request that's been made here today by Mr. Mooney on behalf of the Clontzes, I would move that we grant the appeal as it relates to the preparation of the environmental document, that we direct staff to prepare that document and then return to this board when it's complete, and we'll continue to keep it in this venue as it relates to the board's consideration of that matter in the future. So I would move the staff recommendation.
Second. Please vote. So it sounds like we would be back?
The motion carries with Supervisor Serna voting no.
In January-ish?
Ish. We don't know the time, so we are not going to announce a date. We'll see how long it takes us to prepare the EIR. We've estimated around six months, so we will schedule it whenever it is ready.
But it would be approximately five, six months, something like that, just to give people an idea of, it's not next week.
Right.
And I don't know if this is required, or if it's something we customarily see, but when we've had fee waiver requests in the past, it's been a written request, and then we run it through the process of determining if there was a staff error, it goes through, I think it goes through Rob Leonard, and then back to make a determination about what to take.
If I tell the attorney?
Yeah, I would suggest we follow that normal process, if they want to pursue their request for a fee refund.
Contact the Planning Director, and she'll direct you to the correct, appropriate process.
Yes.
All right. Anything else on this item?
We'll see you all back around Christmas time, before or after.
Okay, next item, please.
Thank you all.
Item 82, well, we, I'm going to read it into the record, we have two minutes, I'll try to read it as slow as possible. Proceed with necessary actions to comply with legal requirements to enact proposed monthly rate increases for the Sacramento County Water Agency.
Have to have a, wait till 2:30 exactly before we can move into this item. Okay. Call the item, please.
She did, I think.
I already read it into the record.
Oh, okay, well, then we will begin.
All right, thank you. Michael Peterson, Department of Water Resources. On May 22nd, we presented a proposed two-year rate increase for the Zone 41 water utility. That proposed increase was approximately $3.22 a month for the first year, and $1.99 per month for the second year for a typical metered customer. Equates to approximately 5.5% revenue increase in each of those two years. The purpose of the proposed rate increase was to address revenue shortfalls we experienced over the past several years, and to get us right, our program back on track in terms of staff vacancies being filled, getting back on top of deferred maintenance, and ensuring that some critical capital improvement projects are carried out. On the 22nd, staff was asked to analyze implementing the proposed rate increases over a four-year period rather than a two-year period, essentially taking that same proposed revenue increase, but spreading that out, stepping it over a four-year period. We were asked to take a look at that and see what that would look like. So in simplistic terms, that would mean 2.75% increase in revenue each year over four years. The, in the package, Attachment 3 shows, it's got two tables. The table on top shows the comparison between the two-year and the four-year option in terms of estimated annual revenue between fiscal years 2018, 19, and fiscal year 2021, excuse me, 2021, 22.
Mr. Peterson, I'm sorry, were you planning to put those on the screen?
I can put that on the screen, yes. So what this, what this shows is that by spreading out the implementation of the increases over four years versus two years, at the end of that first, the next four years, we have, in effect, a $2.4 million loss, or it's $2.4 million in revenue that we would not receive if we go through the, go over the increases over a four-year period. And what that means is we've just, instead of biting that off in two years, we've spread it out over four years. So clearly, until we get to that fourth year, we haven't fully implemented the entire rate increase that has been proposed. The, so what that means is, we would have to make a decision on how to address that unrealized revenue. In May, we presented some of the underlying needs that we have in the program in terms of deferred maintenance, getting staff vacancies filled, and implementing capital projects. And in order to carry out that program that we proposed, we would need to find some way to address this $2.4 million amount of revenue that we wouldn't receive over a four-year rate increase period. The options would simply be continue to defer some maintenance for the next few years until we get to that fourth year, and we've implemented the entirety of the total rate. We take a look at the capital program, and we find some portion of it that we can push out further to delay those costs. Or we dig further into our fund balance, which is in effect our reserve, and we utilize more of that in the intervening years, and we carry out the same program that we are proposing.
You could pause for a second, Mr. Natoli has a question.
Yes, just on the chart, Michael, make sure I'm following you, because I'm looking at here, and I'd circle it in my packet. But if I read your chart correctly, maybe you've got something upside down there, or I'm not reading this right, at the end of the five-year cumulative revenue, you're going to end up with almost $623,000 more? At the end of it, we've used a four-year spread out, and then in the last, in the fifth year of the four-year versus the two-year, you're taking in annually another $260,000 more?
That's, and I can, I can have our CFAO.
It's a better deal than me.
Talk about that. What that's, this is, it's showing how they actually taper back to where we're collecting the same amount by the time we've implemented the entire rate. But if you look at the, over those four years, the totality of what we've collected over those four years, we are down, as you can see, $2.4 million.
Okay, I'm sorry, because I was reading, I stand corrected, it was a 140, I was looking at it at 144, it's 141.
It's correct, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize. I was looking at it, it was 144, I was looking in the $100,000 column. Okay, I follow you.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you. Stand corrected.
So, so we can, we can choose to utilize more of what we have in fund balance to accommodate that unrealized revenue in order to carry out the program that we're proposing to carry out. Or we look to increase the amount that we expect that we'll have to borrow to implement the latter half of the Arden CIP project. So those are options that we can consider when we talk about whether we go with a two-year or a four-year rate increase. As was presented in, on May 22nd, we've continued to have concerns with deferral of maintenance. We were required to defer maintenance as a result of the severe impact to water demand that was instituted by the state through mandated cutbacks in water use. Likewise, for capital projects, we've got a number of projects, the most critical being the Arden Project, which needs to be implemented fully by 2025, but within the next five years, we've got half of that project that needs to get into the ground. Again, instituting this rate increase over a two-year period will help assure that we've got the revenue coming in that we're planning on in order to carry that project out. It doesn't eliminate the need for future borrowing, that was explained before, there's still another $35 million that we'll have to borrow at some point to fund the back half of that project. But in this next interim few years, that $2.4 million is something that we are counting on. So either we collect it, or we make a decision on how to adjust the program, or we decide to dig further into our reserve.
Michael, can I just ask you, excuse me, in the last year, though, 2021, 22, you're showing $250,000 more annually under the four-year plan versus the two-year plan?
Yeah, and there's some anomalies, and when you crunch these numbers through the, through the rate, call it a black box, but we've got a rate calculator. What they do is they actually do even out, that's, there's a little bit of margin of approximation, I can have Herman talk about that more. But the issue is that in the near term, $2.4 million of revenue has to be addressed in order for us to carry out the work that we're proposing to carry out. We, so, you know, after four years, we'll never be able to go back and get that $2.4 million when we need it, which is, in the next few years, it's not 10 years out or 15 years out.
Is it fair to make the assumption, if you had a three-year category in there, that the unrealized revenue, which is shown here as being lost, but it's basically money that stays in the customer's pocket versus coming to meet the needs that we've identified, we've identified? Is it fair to say that that's, it's one half of the 2.3?
I'll have Herman come down, he can talk a little bit more about the, he's the number cruncher on the finance side. Welcome down. Herman Williams, our Chief Financial Administrative Officer.
Good afternoon. Actually, the three-year, if we looked at the three-year, when we did the analysis, we did look at every different situation that was presented. We looked at a two-year, a three-year, a four-year, a five-year. We also looked backwards, if we did a two-year on the back end. What Corolo recommended, was just our consultant, they recommended the five-year. We said, okay, what can we do to reduce that? And we looked at our fund balance and said, we can use some of our reserve for some of the projects we have outstanding. So we went with the two-year rate increase instead of the five-year that Corolo recommended. The third year, if we went with the third year, it would reduce our costs, our loss would be probably another additional $400,000. So reduce our losses by 400 grand if we went for the two-year compared to the four-year. The three-year would be, put us about 1.9 million in lost revenue.
And can you tell me what that anomaly is there? Then, whatever your black box is that crunches this, that, you know, shows at least what it spit out was, that you had, you ended up with more revenue annually at the end of 2021, 22, but if, if you divide it, we're going to have basically three-quarters of this calendar year, by the time this rate increase would take effect, assuming it went into place. And I don't know if you calculated it in from October 1 of this year through October 1 of 2020, or if you used a fiscal year, but nonetheless, I guess, how is it that, I noticed some compounding there, but how does it get compounded to the point that it's, you know, basically you only get one quarter benefit by spreading out over an additional year? I mean, one quarter, you know, recovery, that doesn't compute to me, I'm not the, but you're the guy that crunches the numbers, so tell me.
Right, so it's just, it's a, it's a component of the model itself. So we basically, in that third year, you would receive the full 11% increase in that year, last year.
Versus doing it over four?
Correct.
Right.
So in the fourth year, we're getting the 11%. If, the way it's set up now, we get the 11% in the second year, and the full 11% in the third and fourth year.
Okay, well, I get that, but it's still only getting, picking up only $400,000.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
The, the concern that was expressed in May, and what we continue to have, is not being able to roll out some of the maintenance that, again, we held off the past five years because of impacts to revenue. We're trying to get this program so that it's sized appropriately to provide the appropriate level of service without over-collecting in out-years. That's the other thing, is that there was, there was a, an early look at Corolo thing, a series of increases over five years, which would really have helped push us through on the CIP project, but then we would be over-collecting in out-years far too much, far more than we would need to. And so we're trying to hone this in so that we can get our ongoing O&amp;M to a point where it's stable. We know we're going to have to borrow something to finish the Arden CIP project, but then moving ahead, this gets us much closer, if not at, where we need to be right-sized ongoing. We're still going to have things in the future that we can anticipate, but this gets this program to where we're collecting an amount of revenue that allows our maintenance to be pushed out, expanded more, so that we're more proactive, gets those critical staff vacancies filled, gets, keeps our CIP program going. Attachment 4 shows the, we've got quite a bit of capital improvement, just over the next five years. That's an anomalous CIP. We typically are going to run somewhere around $4 to $6 million on an annual CIP. That we've got this, the Arden Project, which is, it's a critical project, and it's fairly unique because of the age of the system. Once we get through that project, then we, then we've got the ability to have a more stabilized CIP on an ongoing basis, so that we can understand, or that we can anticipate what we're going to need to build, and we can have a more stabilized rate. There's still going to be future cost increases, labor increases, material increases over time, but those are just more of standard economic adjustments that we'll have to address as needed, you know, just keeping based with the economy. But what this proposed two-year rate increase does, it gets us to where we can proceed ahead, get those people out in the field doing the work that we need on the system, get the projects going that we deferred up to now, and then looking ahead, once we can get through the Arden Project, we can stay on a very, a pretty stable basis operationally. The rate and the scale of the rate increase is, just looking back, it's within the range that we've, that we've seen, for our customers have seen, and that doesn't mean, well, you've seen this before, so you should be okay with it. Totally understand, rate increases are always something tough to swallow. But over time, each and every program has costs that increase over time, that it's tied to the economy, it's tied to labor costs, it's tied to. it's tied to the economy, it's tied to labor costs, it's tied to material costs, and we have a growing system, and we have the system that's aging out, and we've got to try to balance all of those without overburdening the customer base. And looking at the range of options, we still do recommend the two-year rate increase. And that's what we're seeking direction, is, is to be able to proceed with that proposed two-year rate increase, and start the public process, the Prop 218 process on that, so we can get that implemented. I think by now, we would be implemented by October. So, we've lost some, some additional time this year, but we really do want to get that implemented so that we can get the program going back to the, to the level that it needs to be. I'll take any questions, yeah?
I don't see any questions. So, your request is for the two-year.
Correct.
Increase. I have to say, I was iffy on this, and I was out walking my dog a couple of days ago, and came across water bubbling up out of the asphalt, and 3-1-1 the request in, and the, your team was out there in a day or two, and I stopped and talked to them, they said, they were explaining to me how old the system is, the Arden water system, and that these kind of breaks happen all the time until they get replaced, so I, you know, that's important to save that water and have the reliability in the homes in addition to the water meters, so I'll move approval. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Natoli, you had a question?
Yeah, well, you have a motion, well, I just, I would just a comment on, on the motion, that I represent the majority of the customers in the area that's going to be affected, and, you know, I appreciate unrealized revenue and the needs, and certainly you've done a good job in explaining that, Michael. I still think, though, that when I look at, you know, the overall system and your needs, and I also think about folks that have to pay that bill, and, like I've said many times before, in a number of the areas that I represent, they get a full county bill, they get a garbage water sewer and storm drainage, and it's not spread out over other water agencies or other garbage collection services and so forth. And so, when they look at it, they think Sacramento, and it is, Sacramento County provides those services, and they get value for that service. I, for one, I shared this with Mr. Gill yesterday, that recognizing that may mean, you know, tighten up the belt a bit, we do carry vacancies, I don't know how that gets calculated in here, obviously, if you get authorized positions, you do your best to fill them, and there's some turnover, there's some capture there annually, and I would much prefer to see us go for a three-year if we're going to do this, that's about a buck sixty and some change, annually. And again, I, without seeing the numbers, I, I trust what you say, that maybe it's only, you know, it's, it's only $400,000 in net to the unrealized income that the district would have, but in my view, and so I don't intend to support the, going out the notice with the two years, it's just big enough bites, and we've got other pending increases at other agencies, and, you know, I want good service, and I want to the situation Mrs. Peters spoke to, I want those to be, you know, attended to, and we do, and we do our best. But there's no question, you've already said, we're going to be back in here talking about the Arden system and the $75 million, and we're going to buy some of that down with reserves and some of the dis-fee increase, and we got older parts of the system. I guess lastly, too, it was a little bit surprising, your last chart, it's real, but we've had it budgeted for many years, and that's the Hood Water Treatment Facility. And so, I guess I would say to you that you should have roped some of that money off in budgets in past years, there may be some cost increases and so forth, but that's, I don't, that's not some new addition that all of a sudden popped up. You know, your staff and you have worked on that for better part of a decade now, and to kind of show it in the chart, it's real, this money's going to be expended in this calendar year or next, hopefully this calendar year, we're going to get it done, or for fiscal year. But, and it may take away from your ability to have a little more flexibility, spend money, and hope the next year that you'll get the next project funded, but, so I'm prepared to support going out, 218 knows with three years, but not with two.
Supervisor Frost had a question? Then you.
Did you move approval?
There's a motion in a second.
Okay. I, I'm going to support staff's recommendation to, and I think, no, I mean, we don't want to charge people more. It's a, it's an ongoing problem, we have an aging infrastructure, and at the same time, we're telling people, don't use as much water, so our budgets are strained from all different sides. And I have sympathy for your dilemma of trying to work within those circumstances, and it's, it's not a lot, but I, I'm sensitive to raising rates, too. But if we're going to raise them, and it's not a whole lot, let's do it so that you have what you need to work with to get, what you need to get done, done. And so, I'm, I'm going to support the two-year.
Thank you, Mr. Serna.
Thank you. I just had a question about Mr. Natoli's position. Is it that you're not necessarily opposing the rate increase, you just want to extend it over an additional year?
Better than additional.
Now, is that a statement of a substitute motion, or is it?
I would offer it, if there would be a second, or I would.
I'll second it, but that's a substitute motion.
Okay, the motion is for a, the substitute motion is for a three-year rate increase versus the motion for a two-year rate increase. Please vote on the three-year increase.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Peters and Supervisor Frost voting against.
You can come stick your finger in the holes in my asphalt.
Thank you.
And I do want to note that Karen Klinger was here earlier, she registered opposition to this as it's another tax.
Item 83 is a recommendation to remove member from the Adult and Aging Commission for failure of participation pursuant to the bylaws of the commission.
Okay, any discussion on this?
Move approval.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Item 84 are your nominations. You are continuing to July 24th the South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council. And for your matters today, you have the Civil Service Commission Supervisor Kennedy.
Yes, nominate Ron Suter.
Okay. And then we have the County Bicycle Advisory Committee.
Continue to July 17th, is what I have, too.
Disability Advisory Commission.
Continue to July 17.
North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council Supervisor.
For District Three, continue to July 24th.
Supervisor Frost.
I was told I did not.
July 24th.
July 24th?
Yeah.
Do you know that?
That's what's on my notes.
Okay.
Continue to July 24th.
Sorry, I was misinfor, I was uninformed, but.
It's okay. Thank you.
It's noted for the record, to continue to July 24th. Rio Linda Elverta Community Planning Advisory Council Supervisor Serna.
I'd like to nominate Hal Morrison, waive the process.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And then we have the Sacramento County Employees Retirement Board.
Please recommend reappointing Keith DeVore and James Deaton Brock.
And then we have Sacramento Countywide Oversight Board.
Chief recommend nominating Amar Harry Harren. Harry Herren. Harry Harren. I'll get it right. It's got to be one of those three, right? Sorry. I've got it phonetically here, but it could still be pronounced different ways, so my apologies, sir.
I have it in my notes to waive the process on this one.
I have a motion to waive the process?
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And now, we have the Veterans Advisory Committee Supervisor Frost. Oh, excuse me, Supervisor Peters.
Continue to July 17th.
And Supervisor Natoli.
Likewise, I've done five of the six interviews, I have one more interview, and I'll be prepared July 17th.
Okay. That concludes your nominations.
County Executive, you have any comments?
Just one comment, we're going to be on recess for board meetings until July 17th, so see everybody back on July 17th.
Have fun. Any board member comments? Ms. Frost?
Thank you, Chair Peters. I'd like to request to close our meeting in memory of a good friend in, from Rio Linda, George Harsh III. George passed away at home on June 1st, 2018, at the age of 84. He loved to hike, fish, hunt, snow ski, water ski, and taught those activities to dozens over the years. George's father was stationed at Pearl Harbor, but after the bombing, the family was evacuated to San Francisco and settled in nearby El Cerrito, where George played football at the El Cerrito High School. He was an Eagle Scout, and from 1951 to 54, he employed his scouting skills as an Arctic and Wilderness Survival Instructor in the U.S. Air Force. George graduated from the University of California, Berkeley in 1960 with a degree in Business Management, and later worked in California's rice industry, managing several mills. In 1959, he built the family's first mountain cabin in Truckee, California, near the Alpine Meadows Ski Area, where he became a charter member of the ski patrol, an endeavor he pursued for over 20 years. George also had a remarkable talent for training dogs, for hunting, and obedience. He was fond of his German wire-haired pointers, pointers. In 1975, George and his family joined the Sacramento Water Ski Club and began decades of competition water skiing. He was an active and regional, in the regional and national championship competitions, and also driver, judge, and regional councilman. He skied into his 80s. In 1977, George designed Berkeley Aquatic Park's steel water jump, ski jump ramp. He filed blueprints with the USA Water Ski for ramp, for the ramp that was still in use, and widely presumed to be the country's most, first steel jump ramp. In 1980, George became involved in the Bell Aqua Water Ski Community in Rio Linda. He helped Bell Aqua host the National Water Ski Championships, and over the years, he helped to make Bell Aqua one of the nation's premier tournament water ski facilities. As a nature enthusiast, he dedicated himself to cultivating dozens of trees, which he initially grew in buckets and then transplanted to form a virtual forest that enhanced the area's ecology and acted as the lake's first wind barrier. George is survived by his devoted companion Eleanor Anklin, his two sons, George IV, Fritz, and Hans, and their mother Barbara, and his sister Joy Ricker. He will be sorely missed. A memorial will be held on June 24th from 11:30 to 2:00 p.m. at the Sacramento Association of Realtors Building 2003 Howe Avenue, Sacramento. And I just want to say that George was a wonderful man. He took me out to that, there's a private lake in Rio Linda, you wouldn't ever know that this place existed unless you went there. It's, it's several homes that are built around two private water ski lakes, and they do competitions and jumps, and he gave me the grand tour, and he was a wonderful, wonderful man, and we will all miss him, and God, God bless George, and may he rest in peace.
Thank you. I also have a German, if you'd like to remove the photo. There we go. Thank you. I'd like the board to adjourn in memory of Barbara Harrison today. When I joined the board in 2005, the Neighborhood Association for Old Foothill Farms area where I grew up was being rejuvenated, thanks to a small, dedicated group of residents, among them Barbara Harrison. She was a founding member of the Old Foothill Farms Community Task Force and stayed active in its leadership until her passing last week, last month. Barbara handled their communications, as well as her membership, and was always involved in special projects like the rededication of Walurga Parks, Japanese Memorial, the Movies in the Park, and the annual community yard sale. She had a long 21-year career with the Sheriff's Department, providing administrative support for the burglary and child abuse boroughs, the jail, and the North Division Patrol. Mostly, my interaction with her, she was a very strong advocate for building the missing sound wall gap along the I-80 freeway, and she was very excited when learning that Sacramento County would be funding that project. I'm just really sorry that she will not live to see the construction of the, of the sound wall. Her community involvement and dedication to the Old Foothill Farms community will be dearly missed, and I'd like the board adjourn today in the memory of Barbara Harrison. So, we will adjourn today in memory of George Harsh III and Barbara Harrison, and see you in July.